Powerful.
You got any extra orange shirts? You got any other shirts available?
I don't know, they had them up there.
So do you know who bought your shirts? Huh?
You're not for the pipeline.
No.
Why you want an orange shirt?
So why do you want an orange shirt if you're not for the pipeline?
This, this young lady here, her name is Vera.
Hi there.
How are you?
You look familiar.
Brian, we, up at Cheryl's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
How are you?
Good, good. You got any extra shirts? I want a souvenir showing them how they want it, their jobs are on the line. They think their jobs are on the line, you know?
Our jobs are not on, on the line.
They're not good.
We're trying to get jobs. That's the difference.
So who paid for the shirts? What did they tell you? Who paid for your shirts? And who, and did they give you dinner again? Who paid for the shirts?
We're, we're a labor, we're organized labor.
I understand.
We make our living. Vera, we make our living by searching out work.
Yeah.
That's how we do things.
Yeah.
Nobody's forcing us to do this stuff, nobody.
Nobody, but who paid for the buses?
Me being here, I'm sponsoring my stuff.
We came in our own trucks.
Yeah.
I know, but I saw buses. How about the buses that were?
And when we work, the union gets our dues off every paycheck and that's the pay.
And who paid for the shirts? They paid for it?
We do, the union. Every time we work.
Why you pay your dues?
Good.
Would you like a sign?
She's just trying to get a T-shirt.
No, if you have a T-shirt, you got an extra T-shirt?
She wants a T-shirt, better.
No, I don't need a sign.
That's a nice camera.
Yeah, thank you. I have to, I have to record in Pennsylvania what they're doing to us, how they're putting all these pipelines near our homes, and they're putting us at risk. So I know you don't want to put us at risk. I know you don't want to hurt anybody.
Most of them are non-union jobs.
And they're mostly non-union in Pennsylvania, so.
There's a big difference.
And there's going to be the same thing. They're going to treat you the same here, believe me.
I've worked both sides. The regulations in New York are a lot stricter. There's a lot more inspectors.
Three million homes. Wait a minute, I live in Pennsylvania, and what it's done for my community is nothing but fabulous stuff.
Oh yeah, where's your community?
I live in the village of Sayer.
Oh, that's another county, yeah.
You know, I mean, we don't have hardly anything. And if it wasn't for the gas industries and stuff in that community alone, I mean, there wouldn't be nothing. And not only that.
Well, didn't you survive before gas came? Didn't you eat?
No, I didn't.
You didn't? Oh, you mean you used to live on oxygen?
Because I was on, I got on public assistance and all that. I mean, if you want to go to work and, and pay for my grocery thing, I'll sit home and hang out and pump iron.
Well, I called my, I called social services and they told me it's the same amount of people before gas, during gas, after gas.
It's only different amount of people that moved into a different geographical area.
Same amount of people in the world here.
And as people migrate around certain areas.
But aren't they doing less? Aren't they doing less in your community?
No, they're not. They're doing more because now the gas pipelines and stuff are there.
They're doing more. There's more people coming in.
Real estates coming in.
I know you don't want to hurt people because they're doing it, and.
Of course not.
And you don't know that you're.
Of course not.
And you know that they're not guaranteeing any jobs. They're not guaranteed they're going to use you. They're not guaranteeing they're going to use you.
But if it doesn't happen.
Because they haven't been using, using union near us.
If it doesn't happen, then it, then it won't happen. Then there's not a chance in the world.
Don't, don't believe them because they don't guarantee that. Unless they put in writing, you don't know, you can't believe nothing.
I've worked Millennium Line, I've worked on a P A.
How many were union on the Millennium Line? When you did Millennium?
How many people have you killed? How many babies have you murdered? Well, let's not discuss my Navy days.
How many were union, you think, when you were doing Millennium? Do you remember?
Most of them.
Most of them were union?
Yeah.
And that would be what, 80%?
And that was an over 300 mile line. And no fracking wells have followed that one. Like everybody keeps saying, well, they're going to frac up here. There's not a well along that Millennium Line.
I know, but they're going to be fracking more. Every line you put in, they're going to frac more where we are, in Pennsylvania.
That's been in the ground at least five years.
I know, but it's going to hurt us where we are. They're going to frac more where we are. And we're getting fracked very heavily.
I, I, I'm very sympathetic towards that. I don't like wells.
You don't like what?
I don't like wells. This is transmission.
I know, because we got wells near us. We got all kinds of wells. And we're getting exposed to all kinds of stuff. We got water contamination down six sections of our county.
You know what? Your work that you did over there has awakened the people up here in New York.
I know.
They're not going to get the same right in this state as they did in your.
Oh, I know, well, that's why you guys are still keeping it out, which is good.
Thanks, thanks to your effort.
And we're open-minded. I don't want to see any of this gas go overseas.
And none of us.
I know, because this is where it's going. When you put this pipeline, isn't, isn't it going to go overseas?
It's just a transport.
You've got to lobby and legislate against it.
That's what we're doing. We're lobbying against it, sorry.
We don't disagree with everything. We're open-minded.
I understand that.
But this is a transmission line. It's not a fracking well.
It's transmission. And do you think there must be like compressor stations along that line? Because they're saying to us, there's no new compressor stations. In, in our area, it's every two to four miles.
I haven't seen the plans. I haven't, so I can't argue that one way or the other.
And when they put those in, I know, but when they put those in, you know how rough that is on the neighbors and the people in the area? That they have to be exposed to that? As they put them every two to four miles where we are now. We got dozens in our county. And they told us.
But that's, that's for each well, though. Once they're on the line, they don't use that many.
They got, they got, that's 100 miles.
Once it hits the transmission line, they don't use that many well, um, that many compressor stations.
You've got to use something.
It's already, it's already compressed coming in.
I know, but to push it through for 100 miles, aren't they going to need some kind of compression?
Not much, because it's already being compressed at the start. It's already pushing.
So all they need, you're thinking the start and then the end?
Pretty close. It's going to flow.
Yeah.
If you open a valve on one side and you're pushing from the other, it's going to flow.
I hope they don't need extra ones because it's, that's really tough.
You know what I'm saying? It's like a pipe. It's like a hose. If you open one end and you're pushing from the other, what do you need in the middle?
I, I look forward to where you and I are going to be up in Cheryl's loft over there.
Where's Cheryl's loft?
You remember the Vishnu couch up there?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I was playing in the band, remember?
Right, right, that was great, yeah, I liked that.
And also, and you caught me in the creek down there in Pennsylvania, remember?
You were the guy in the creek?
I was one of the guys in the creek. While you were up there on the bridge.
I was on the bridge. And were you there too?
I wasn't there, I was just here.
Oh, you were one of the guys, oh, that's cool.
Now you remember.
Yeah, I do.
You know who my mother-in-law, right?
Who's your mother-in-law now?
Rema.
Oh, Rema's your mother-in-law? Okay, I didn't know that. I didn't know that. I forgot.
No, maybe, okay.
Now I know.
You know, we're good people.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you too. So which one are you with? Are you with, what kind of a?
I'm 785.
And then what do they do? Is it construction, basically?
We do the construction end of this. And this is our job. This is our livelihood. Most of us have 20 years of veteran putting pipe in the ground. And it's usually to re, you know, old, replace an old pipe and so on and so forth.
Right.
And so this is.
A large, okay.
Before we do it really efficiently and safely and with great regard for, for the natural world around.
The thing is, they're going to go through all kinds of wetlands that go near homes.
No, you know, and they take particular, follow me here. They take, they take particular precautions when they get around those types of environments.
I know, but remember you did, remember you did it near me? And they went through all the wetlands and all the blowouts we had in that creek? And we had to suffer through all those blowouts and the damage?
A few little accidents with anything you do. Flying an airplane. But they go to extraordinary efforts.
Those inspectors were there. Every piece of that pipeline, you have inspectors.
So they haven't, they haven't near us too?
That's Pennsylvania, this is New York.
Now, are you saying there's more inspections in New York than Pennsylvania?
I think because, that, because they're not going to get the same right that they had in your state. We, they'll do things different when they come up in here, if they don't, at all.
A lot of pipelines going in Pennsylvania.
Going across my property, a lot of problems.
Plant wildlife.
Well, how about, how about the ones that have problems? Do you care about those of us who have problems?
They're about 50 years old, 60 years old.
No, but I'm talking about the new lines.
Now there's natural gas, they have the money to start replacing it.
I'm talking about the new lines, all the problems we have with the new lines and the blowouts in our creeks and all the difficulties. And they were fined and everything in our.
Couple, couple little problems. That's nothing compared to 20,000 miles of pipeline in those states.
Well, I'm talking about my county, I'm talking about my county where I live, you know?
On behalf of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, I want to welcome all of you to the public meeting for the draft environmental impact statement for the Constitution Pipeline and Right Interconnect Project. Let the record show that the comment meeting began at 7:05 PM on April 2nd in Appleton, New York. My name is Kevin Bovin, and I am an environmental project manager at the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. To my right is Doug Bootyhan, also representing for tonight. And to his right is Amy Gitchell, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Also with us tonight, you may have been at the back table before you came in, representing for tonight, is Tim Seacrest, Charles Brown, Lavinia DeSano, and General Ward. So the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Federal Highway Administration, the U.S., the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets, are participating as cooperating agencies in the environmental review of these projects. I want to thank those cooperating agencies for their continued assistance with the review of these projects. I'm going to briefly turn things over to Amy with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for a brief overview of their process and how it interacts with our process and the review of these projects.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Amy Gitchell. I'm the chief of the Upstate New York section of the Regulatory Branch of the New York District, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. I will be participating in tonight's meeting on behalf of the Corps of Engineers. The Corps of Engineers is here today to obtain information and evidence and ensure coverage of both the public's and the Corps' concern to assist in the regulatory review of the permit application submitted by Constitution Pipeline Company for the construction of the pipeline that will be described by Mr. Bowman. If constructed, the pipeline would require crossings of wetlands and streams that are considered waters of the United States and regulated under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act in both Pennsylvania and New York. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, as lead federal agency, will make a decision whether to issue a certificate of public convenience and necessity to allow the construction of this project. The Corps is neither a proponent for nor an opponent of the proposed work. Our role is to determine whether the proposed activity, in this case, the construction of the 124-mile pipeline that would require numerous crossings of waters of the United States is in the overall public interest. This hearing will play an important part in that determination. Please understand that we do not expect to answer questions from the audience in this hearing related to the proposal as we are here to obtain information and your comments. Questions on the regulatory process in general can be directed to my staff in my office on another day. The New York District has issued a public notice for this project with the comment period closing on April 7. The entire public notice, including all of the attachments, is currently posted on the New York District website. The website address is www.nan.usace-army mail. We do have some copies of the public notice without the attachments on the registration table. If you are not currently on our public notice email distribution list and would like to receive an email announcement for future public notices from my office, please provide your email address to one of the staff members at the registration table today. I look forward to hearing your comments this evening.
Thank you, Amy. You'll note that we have arranged for a court reporter to transcribe this meeting so that we will have an accurate, accurate record of the meeting. If you'd like to receive a copy of that transcript, you can make arrangements with the court reporter following this meeting. So in June 2013, Constitution Pipeline and Iroquois Gas Transmission filed applications under Section 7 of the Natural Gas Act. These projects consist of installation of approximately 324 miles, 30-inch diameter natural gas pipeline between Susquehanna County, Pennsylvania, and Schuaheri, New York. The primary purpose of this meeting is to give you the opportunity to provide specific environmental comments from the draft EIS prepared by FERC staff for these projects. It will help us the most if your comments are as specific as possible regarding the proposed projects in the draft EIS. I'd like to clarify again. This is a project being proposed by Constitution and Iroquois and it is not a project being proposed by FERC. Rather, FERC is the lead federal agency responsible for evaluating these applications. And therefore, FERC is not an advocate for these projects. Instead, the FERC is an advocate for the environmental review process. So during our review of these projects, we assembled information from a variety of sources, including Constitution, Iroquois, the public, other state, local, and federal agencies, and our own independent analysis and fieldwork. We analyzed this information and prepared a draft EIS that was distributed to the public for comment. A notice of availability for this draft EIS was issued for this project on February 12, 2014. So we are coming to the, close to the end of the 45-day comment period on the draft EIS. And that ends this Monday, April 7, 2014. All comments written, comments received, either written or spoken, will be addressed in our final environmental impact statement. I encourage you, if you plan to submit comments and have not, please do so here today, either verbally during our comment period, comment portion of the meeting tonight, or in writing using one of the forms that are outside the ring and by the tables. You can also submit comments using the procedures outlined in the notice of availability of the draft EIS, which includes instruction on how to submit your comments electronically. Your comments will be considered with equal weight regardless of whether they are provided verbally during the meeting tonight, or meeting earlier this week, tomorrow, or submitted in writing. If you receive a copy of the draft EIS, either paper or CD, you will automatically receive a copy of the final EIS. If you did not get a copy of the draft and you want to get a copy of the final, please make sure you sign the attendance list at the back of the room. Provide your name and address and we'll make sure to have a copy of the final EIS. In addition, I want to state that neither the draft nor the final are decision-making documents. In other words, once they are issued, they do not determine whether the project would be approved or denied. I also want to differentiate between the roles of two distinct FERC staff groups. First is the commission and the environmental staff. Myself and the other members of FERC here tonight are part of the environmental review staff. And we oversee the preparation of the environmental impact statement for the project. We do not determine whether or not to approve the project. Instead, the FERC commissioners decide that. And they consist of five presidentially-appointed individuals who are responsible for making a determination. So as I mentioned earlier, EIS is not a decision-making document, but it does assist the commission in determining whether or not to approve or deny the projects. In addition, the commission will consider environmental information from EIS, public comments, as well as a host of non-environmental issues. And those include things such as engineering, markets, and rates, and its decision on whether to approve or deny the projects. There is no review of FERC decisions by the president or Congress, maintaining FERC's role as an independent regulatory agency. If the commission votes to approve the project and a certificate of public convenience and necessity were to be issued, Constitution and Iroquois would be required to meet all certain conditions that would be outlined in that certificate. FERC environmental staff will then monitor the project through construction and restoration. They perform daily onsite inspections to document environmental compliance with applicable laws and regulations, Constitution, and Iroquois' proposed plans and litigation, and any additional conditions in that FERC certificate. Okay, I'll get all that FERC stuff out of the way now. We won't count the FERC. So if you don't want to speak tonight and you don't, or you don't say everything you wanted, of course, you can still hand in written comments tonight or if you have something prepared, you can just hand that to us tonight at the back table. So as I said before, this meeting is being recorded by a court reporter so that all your comments are accurately, correctly transcribed into the public record. So when you come up to the podium after your call, please make sure you state your full name and spell your name so that we can accurately report your comments. My number one rule is that please show respect for whoever is speaking. Because of the left amount of people that we have signed up tonight, we're going to limit everyone to exactly four minutes. Doug will keep track of your time. And approximately 20 seconds to go, he'll mention that you have 20 seconds left. Once you reach four minutes, he'll say that your time has expired. And then I ask that, at that time, can you complete your sentence and return to your seat? And then we will call the next speaker. Doug's got a good watch, so please, please respect his time. And don't call out if someone's nearing their timer. So with that, I'll turn things over to Doug. We'll call our first speakers.
Dr. Lisa Bar. And if we could go ahead and get Kim Felter, Arneida, and Peter Hutterberg on deck, please.
Ready? My name is Lisa Bar, L-I-S-A-B-A-R-R. I'm a journalist with Counterpunch of Lake. The last four years, I've been covering this industry in two states. I'm intervening against this pipeline and speaking as a citizen tonight because sometimes a journalist puts down the reporter's pad and throws a lifeline to a person who's drowning. And I see a lot of people in this room who are drowning. Christians, Muslims, Jews know the prodigal son strays but changes his ways and is welcomed back, forgiven. In real life, prodigal sons are either mistaken for heroes or treated with great schooling. FERC, your behavior needlessly splits our region. You gave a month's notice of holding this hearing during our epidemic community's spring break. That's the nature of our community. That's no break for the experts, and you know it. They have to publish a parish and schedule their research trips three to six months in advance. They cannot be here. FERC, repent. We need a redo. There is anger here because prodigal sons like Tony Soprano or Michael Perleone didn't really make the streets safe for kids. In New Orleans, the Teamsters bragged about having blown up Channel 8's transmitting tower in 1982 so their affiliated IDEW videographers negotiated a great contract that made the reporters' union smile. But only the IDEW guys got a deal and only for a short time. Our union got busted. Bad behavior, ignorant behavior, never pays off for the entire flock. Someone always gets hurt, usually the prodigal sons and daughters with the least power. Remember Love Canal? A rare, true cleanup of a super fun site that, that was hooker chemical. Their counterpart today on steroids is Cavita. Remember Rockefeller busting the unions overtly? Can't get away with that now, so they buy everybody off with their good deeds. Newspaper ads. I just got interrupted. Is this going to be?
Please continue to interrupt my stuff.
Newspaper ads, stories straight out of the press release. That's the Maravitos and the Williams, the big shots. They'll always land on their feet because they can put everyone on a bus with a chicken dinner every night. We tried regulating them, but after World War II, the industry hijacked our transportation, energy, even our national defense policies. So I want to be angry with the Teamsters disrupting what's supposed to be a discussion of the DEIS with industry talking points that are false. But instead, I have to reason with them. And with you, FERC, here's what's at stake and why forgiveness matters. In Sydney Center, right now, access roads without ditches, retention ponds, all absent in the DEIS too, by the way, are being constructed. We've seen this before in Bradford County, PA. The prodigal sons did repent to come fall of 2011. An 80-something-year-old mother tells her 50-something-year-old son, "The water's never going to get that high here in Waverly. We won't evacuate." They woke up in the middle of the night, no power, fridge of water splashing on their beds. Son and mother sloshed two chairs onto the kitchen table. The water was neck-high in the morning. Son was still breathing on that chair, holding his dead mother on the chair next to him in the water. That's what happens when regulators don't do their jobs!
Please turn off the speaker.
In Washington State, just this week, they said they'll never be able to dig the hundreds missing out of the mud two years after the timber industry regulators weren't properly enforced. When a federal regulatory agency gets funding from the industry, they police people down. We want all of you back in the fold. We want you healthy and happy and working. But you have to acknowledge the error of your ways. Give the people who study this the most a chance to comment. Review these hearings. Teamsters, you're our neighbors. You're our friends. We hire you to fix our homes. Don't get on the bus again next time. Let democracy stand a fighting chance. Make your union do its job. My brother's a Teamster, and he can tell you in Michigan, they're sending kids out in the middle of the night without brakes on those trucks. They're sending you, they're, they're selling you a line of crap. I hope we all survive this.
Kim Felter, Canarali. Peter Hutterberg.
Uh, Dr. Canarali, Edison, Frank, E.L. T as in Tom, E.R.-C.A.N.A.R.E.L.L.I. Okay. My name is Kim Felter, Canarali. I am not here to engage in a conversation about the old Bush-Cheney energy agenda and regulate the natural gas pipeline, and regulate natural gas pipeline, yet am here to change the conversation. New York has the opportunity to be the leader for the world on the issue of energy. I agree 100% with Governor Cuomo when he said New York can take care of itself. A $750,000 grant was made available to Amphenol to invest in a natural gas pipeline to keep Amphenol in the area. Yet rather than take the lead and institute a plan for solar energy and really stay on carbon emissions, we squander the opportunity and invest in a plan to continue the onslaught of natural gas production. Amphenol can stay in the area with any energy option. Natural gas is not their only option. NISIC has been providing natural gas and electricity to New York since 1852 and could easily incorporate Maravillos, leather stocking, and Corning natural gas to continue providing these services. The fact is, there has never been a demand for natural gas in New York State, and as a result, NISIC never laid the infrastructure. We are being redundant in our efforts to provide natural gas. We need a clean energy conversation that reinvests our tax dollars back into New York solar companies that are ready, willing, and able to install solar panels for Amphenol today. Solar companies can employ just as many, if not more, people than any natural gas company or project can. I would appreciate FERC's consideration of the fact that New York wants to get away from fossil fuels. We are an agricultural state and stand to lose much with the approval of a natural gas pipeline. I am asking FERC to take citizens' concerns into consideration for a clean energy state and deny the Constitution Pipeline Project. New York is a sovereign state and can decide what we want in the way of energy. Allow the constituents of Governor Cuomo and U.S. Senator Charles Schumer to initiate a clean energy agenda. Together with our legislators, we can come up with a better plan for New York and utilize our New York tax dollars for our New York businesses. Thank you.
Peter Hudeberg, last name H-U-D-I-B-U-R-G. FERC's mission is apparently to supply reliable, efficient, and sustainable energy to its customers. I contend that this Constitution Pipeline Plan will not produce or deliver reliable, efficient, and sustainable energy. I submit that Marcellus Shale Field is very close to going into a decline in production. In fact, Moshe Ben Rogen just published an article, "Marcellus Shale Through a Glass Dark," in which he states, which he predicts, that Marcellus Shale will, production will be plateauing in 2017, and you probably know shale gas wells deplete very, very quickly, and he's saying that the whole field will, pretty much, production will be down to zero by 2019 or 2020. In your DEIS, you refer to global warming potential. Methane is being 25. Many authorities disagree with you, it should actually be 86. Methane has a global warming equivalent, it's 86 times more warming than CO2 in the 20-year period, and 20 years is what's far more relevant for us today. We have plenty of evidence that's accumulating that global warming is accelerating and is taking place much faster than scientists in the past had predicted. So you say that, under the socioeconomic section, you say that property values and insurance policies are hard to predict whether they will go up or down, but there's been lots of proof indicating that property values do go down after the initial boom phase. And this is certainly not going to constitute a long-term boom, the building of a pipeline. It's very temporary, and so, and I'm sure these workers realize that, it's a very temporary employment. DEIS says, "We conclude that cumulative impacts associated with Constitution-irquod projects, when combined with other known or reasonably foreseeable projects, would be effectively limited." Well, I suggest that they won't be really effectively limited. You can't separate construction of pipeline from the eventual build-out of perhaps as many as 42 compressor stations. If compressor stations are put in with the same spacing as in taking place in Pennsylvania, every two to four miles, there could be 42 compressor stations. So these compressor stations, processing plants, put out large quantities of...
40 seconds, please.
...global warming gases. LNG technology might also be put up. And again, the very nature of that technology involves releasing, deliberate releasing of methane. So the alternatives are zero net energy, passive houses, and deep energy retrofits. And that is...
Your time has expired. May I finish? Your time has expired. One second. Quiet! Mr. Hudeberg, your time has expired. There is 50 more speakers that have signed up to speak. You had your four minutes.
So that sustainable energy is...
Mr. Hudeberg, your time is done.
Zero net energy and deep energy retrofits.
Thank you for your service.
Sandra Davis. Chris Stafford.
Just one moment. You'll notice that a uniformed police officer just came down here after Mr. Hudeberg extended just four minutes of time. We've only gone through four speakers, and I'm already having to warn you that I can shut this meeting down, and I will not hesitate to do so if it comes to that. I ask that when time is up, please take your seat. We have a lot of people to get through tonight, and I want to make sure that people who are signed up towards the end get home at a reasonable hour. In addition, if things do not get transcribed into the record, they will not be transcribed at all.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Davis, D-A-D-I-S.
And a 34-year resident of the town of Efton. I believe, as do a majority of the town residents, that natural gas development can be accomplished safely. However, with Governor Cuomo's ban putting development on hold, we would like to be able, we'd like the ability that the Constitution Pipeline affords the residents, schools, and businesses for access to the affordable clean energy sources to our area. After reviewing the FERC-issued draft environmental impact statement and the oversight of FERC, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the United States Army Corps of Engineers, the Federal Highway Commission, and the New York State Department of Agricultural and Markets, I am confident with the professionals of these agencies, it will be done in a safe and unlimited potentials to the area. The residents of Efton, New York have rejected the attempts of the anti-development and economical growth people in this town, as reflected by overwhelming majorities in 2011, 2012, and 2013 local town vote elections. The majority of the votes was about 65 to 70% against the obstructionist. I pray for us, well-being here, that the pipeline will create new jobs, people coming into the area. We have I-88, 17, and railway access within the town. We hope to attract new businesses here and allow our town to grow. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Please continue.
My husband has lived in this area most of our lives. Anytime we moved away, we were drawn back to upstate New York with rolling hills and all the water streams, waterways we have here, and it's just a beautiful place to live. My point tonight is that this proposed pipeline has nothing to do with fracking or drilling deep into the earth to release stored gases and the safety of this proposed pipeline. My husband's been an operating engineer since 1986, and his very first job he went out on was on a pipeline. It was not a gas line, it was an electric line, and there weren't any protests from landowners about that one. And that electric pipeline had to follow all the same guidelines and tools from the federal and state governments. They had to clear the land and restore it by these guidelines.
I sat through the entire hearing last evening in O'Nianau. I want to speak briefly about the environment that I grew up in. I'm old enough to remember tattoos on old people's arms in the subway, invaluable evidence of the violent solution. I'm old enough to remember fire hoses and police dogs, lunch counters, and lynching and muddy graves. I'm old enough to remember hard hats beating demonstrators, kids who did not want to fight in rich men's wars. I'm old enough to remember when 1984 was only a prophecy and "Big Brother is watching" seemed like a paranoid delusion. I'm old enough to know a bully when I hear one, especially when he whines how unfair the world has been to him to justify screwing his neighbor. I'm old enough to know a bully when I see one, his conscience muffled under a uniform, his bravado inflated with false camaraderie, his hunger fueled by carrots he'll never reach. I'm old enough to see the new fascism and hopeful enough to think we can beat it. I know I can't do it alone, and I'm counting on you brave public servants at the front of the room. Please, don't let orange become lemon brown.
Antonio Segley. Jason Quail.
Brian Latte, Sr. Next seat. I've been at the forefront of both sides of this issue for over eight years. I started one of the first landowner coalitions in New York. I am one of the founders of the Joint Landowners Coalition. I'm a local, second-generation businessman that has witnessed the loss of many businesses and youth leaving to find work. I'm for the pipeline transporting domestic energy to rebuild and secure this great state and country. That said, I have a suggestion. There are two stakeholders that will be affected by the pipeline, the landowners whose property will be appropriated. They should get just compensation for their land. Unfortunately, they can't get compensation from a company that has the power of eminent domain. Eminent domain tips the power to the company. The use of comparable values and finding a just price doesn't cut it. Comparables, excuse me, comparables can never factor the people who walk away from property sales because of a pipeline encumbrance. This is a basic sampling bias era, and it can never be accounted for. Since you don't have true comparables, I suggest maybe it's time to change. Instead of having FERC hearings that have morphed into community dividing sessions, how about confining it to those who have the most to gain or lose, the true stakeholders, the deed holders of the land where the pipelines are proposed? How about true and honorable just compensation? How about changing the way easements are obtained? Instead of companies compensating based on traditional payment of acreage required, how about paying the deed holders a small fractional fee of the gas that is put through the pipeline? Eliminate the traditional acre fee and usage of pressure of eminent domain as a negative. The fractional fee could start on a sliding scale of capacity. This allows lower cost for the entity in the startup position. Paid by linear foot times circumference and capacity, paid biennially or annually, incentive fee stays with the deed, bringing more than one-time payment, and instead of lessening the future value, it could bring higher value for that land. This will instill pride of knowing that the landowners are part of supporting infrastructure with true and just compensation. Maybe it's time to link, maybe it's time to think outside the standard procedure and meet with ideas that inspire people and true stakeholders to want to step up to build infrastructure that in the end is a benefit, a positive, and benefits all. Thank you.
Dr. Edwards, Dr. Edwards, Congress.
First in the being here tonight?
No!
Are you here for any reason other than you need a good-paying job with pensions and healthcare?
No!
Thank you. I want to express my support for the draft environmental impact statement. I believe it adequately addresses all issues presented by the 124-mile-long Constitution Pipeline, excuse me, Project. As business manager of Labor's Local 785, I represent the 829 hard-working men and women of Local 785. The majority of our members live and work right here in the Southern Tier and Central New York region. Due to the aging pipeline infrastructure installed 40 or more years ago and the increase in demand for natural gas in New York and New England, pipeline construction has become a significant portion of the work our local union labors perform. In fact, over the last three years, 30% of the work hours recorded for labors in Local 785 have been the direct result of pipeline construction and maintenance. The Constitution Pipeline will be built by union labor, and our National Pipeline Agreement requires that minimum 50% of the local labor will be used on this project. This pipeline will be built by our neighbors and members of our local communities with experience and knowledge to construct, put this pipeline safely with little impact as possible to the surrounding environment. As many labors, I'm not just a laborer, I'm a father and a landlord. In fact, I am a landlord with an active pipeline running through my property. This 8-inch propane line was installed in the 1960s. The owners of this line have safely operated it for over 50 years. This safe operation is due to regular maintenance inspection, which happens on this line. Stretching across our entire rural neighborhood, this pipeline runs under my neighbors' agricultural fields. For many years, I have seen him work this land with large farm equipment without incident or concern. New York pipeline infrastructure is aging. New lines need to be put in place to handle demand. New lines such as Constitution incorporate the latest state-of-the-art technology to ensure safe, reliable energy transportation. With advances in coating systems and cathodic protection, the Constitution Pipeline has a 100-plus-year lifespan. Today's monitoring system can detect the most minute imperfection in a weld or in Under EIS Section 2112, Reliable, Grievous, and Safety Report notes that although regulators require remote control shut-off bells and not yet gone into effect in what applied pipelines built in the future, Constitution committed to the use of remote control shut-off bells for the proposed pipeline. Is estimated that 20% of the total construction budget we spent on it to ensure environmental compliance, 20% of $700 million.
20 seconds, please.
At the end of my conclusion, I will submit this for the record. This environmental impact statement was compiled by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Federal Highway Administration, New York State Department of Agricultural Markets, and I feel as an advocate of the result represents the adequate study, and we support it.
Thank you. My name is William Roche, and it's W-I-L-L-I-A-M-R-O-C-H-E, with an initial J. My wife, Christine, and I are affected stakeholders in Davenport, New York. There are far more educated individuals here this evening that can speak to the issues of clean water, fragile ecosystem, job creations, changes in topography, and so I choose tonight to talk about eminent domain. My wife and I have earned the privilege of being stewards for 127 acres in Davenport, New York. I use the word "earned" because I personally stand before you as a result of a society that provided me with opportunities to pull myself up by the bootstraps and forge ahead and earn my way. I've been through orphanages, I've been through foster homes, I've been through either school colleges. I was taught to take ownership for my mistakes. Something we need to teach children today is to take ownership, both for their accomplishments and for their mistakes. I took nothing and never expected to gain from what I did not earn. Throughout my journey, I've come to learn the value of friends, neighbors, family, and brotherhood. My wife, Chris, and I planned our passive solar home in Davenport, New York. Our joy was overwhelming for all the good that we sacrificed to improve our quality of life to live with nature. Two weeks before the shovel was to go in the ground, there standing in our driveway was a man who instructed, introduced himself as a landsman for the Constitution Pipeline. He had some papers for us to sign, and he went on about how this pipeline would traverse our land and ask for us to sign survey permit. I told him we're not interested. In time that morning, this stranger to us became adamant. His tone changed, now stating that regardless, in the end, they will take our land. "No, no," and he, no, he just smirked, and he said, "No, we will just take your land. We are going to pay you just compensation." I said, "No, the land's not for sale. There is no just compensation. We earned the privilege to be here without you." He grinned. "We'll put this pipe in," he said, "where it needs to go, with or without your permission. We're going to offer you just compensation. We are going to offer you just compensation over and over again." These last two peo, these last two weeks in television, just compensation scenarios rose their ugly head. CEO Mary Bauer of GM hired a compensation lawyer, Ken Feinberg, yesterday to explore ways to provide just compensation to families for 13 young lives, 13 young children who died. Because again, corporate America and the governmental agencies charged and overseeing GM ignored the obvious, the pleas of families for 10 years. These children and young adults were the price of doing business. And after all, "We're sorry," said Miss, Miss, stated Miss Bauer. And after all, "We're sorry," said Miss, Miss, stated Miss Bower, "but Mr. Feinberg will offer just compensation for 13 young lives, your daughters, your sons." David Fieldman, head of the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, shook his finger at her and said, "We knew for 10 years, and yes, but we'll offer just compensation." JM took his 12-year-old son fly-fishing for six years
20 seconds, please.
behind the home, two miles down from the Dan River. Not anymore, it's now a toxic waste dump. But Duke Energy is going to offer them just compensation. You go home tonight, ladies and gentlemen, and you go into your living room, to your bedroom, go on your buses, and have it filled with other people, and let them say to you, "I'm going to offer you just compensation, I'm sleeping here tonight. I'm going to use your
Please include your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Karen Fletcher. Arika.
Hi, I'm Kathy McNulty, I live in Sidney, New York. I will address job creation a bit since there's a lot of people who want jobs, and I want to tell them there's plenty of good jobs fixing the aging infrastructure in cities, the pipelines in cities. My daughter works two blocks away from two buildings that blew up, that blew up and eight people died. There's plenty of jobs for you. You don't need my farm, you don't need to steal it. I do not accept the risk to my family have my land stolen and this pipeline forced upon me. I have a second daughter who would like to be a farmer. I don't want her driving over a high-volume 30-inch pipeline, and you should not be able to force me to do so by taking my land by eminent domain. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Harz, H-A-R-T-Z, first name Lynn, L-Y-N-M. 100 feet, 100 feet to me is where Constitution decided to put the pipeline, 100 feet from my back door. Anyone else in this room with the same situation? Okay. 100 feet is the destruction of my future, excuse me, as my beautiful home will be worth nothing. 100 feet could be a whale, a boat, two to three school buses, an extension cord, or hose. Imagine how close that is. 100 feet means I could sit on my new deck, watch the construction without using field glasses. 100 feet, who made that decision that this is the measurement that's okay? Did they even consider the effects of the landowner, homeowner, when locating it so close to a home? Constitution Pipeline is like a dictatorship, taking over land with no considerations for anyone in the way. We asked the overly friendly Constitution representative to see if it could be moved, and the answer was no. Our house was an investment, many years of hard work and improvements, our dream for the future. My husband passed away from cancer last September, so now it's just me struggling with what I should do next. Maybe I would like to sell and downsize someday, but my choices will be limited because the house and adjacent land will be worth nothing. Banks won't finance buyers and insurance companies won't insure. What is $14,000 to sign? Will that bring me happiness and a secure future? Haven't I been through enough? Haven't we all been through enough? Please consider my comments and rule the Constitution Pipeline does not go through. I'm all for the advancement, but not at the expense of my future and others like me. Thank you.
Nina Takahashi, Araperto Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name is Mina Takahashi, that's M-I-N-A, last name T-A-K-A-H-A-S-H-I. I'm a landowner in Shenango County, and I'm also an inhabitant of this planet Earth, you all are. And I am here to say that I do not approve of this project, the Constitution Pipeline, because of the environmental impact of the, of the project as a whole. My understanding is that this panel is here to take comment and to evaluate whether this project is in the public interest, and also to evaluate the environmental impacts of this project. And I'm sure you are aware and I hope you will consider the recent report that the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change released this week with their irrefutable findings that has been, that was completely agreed upon by over 100 governments internationally, that quote, "human interference with the climate system is occurring, and climate change poses risks for humans and natural systems," end quote. They go on to, in the summer, they go on to warn that without swift and decisive action to limit greenhouse gas emissions from fossil fuels, this planet is pretty much doomed. The methane emissions from oil and gas production and distribution via pipelines is a major contributor to methane emissions. This, any new build-out of fossil fuel extraction will exacerbate the situation, and I believe it, you are uncomfortable to really take that into account when you decide whether to permit this project, and I hope you will decline. Thank you very much.
Abby Tamper.
Hello, hello, my name is Araperto Rodriguez, H-E-R-I-B-E-R-T-O, Rodriguez, R-O-D-R-I-G-U-E-Z. I do not support this project and for the reason being that the, the environment, the draft, the draft environmental impact statement doesn't address all, I mean, this is a pipeline that goes 124-plus miles and is 30 inches long, and it doesn't address all the compressor stations that are going to be needed to push this gas, all the hydrators. So this is to me an incomplete draft statement, and that reason alone, it should be looked at and even may be denied, because this has to be considered as a full project, because if it's considered that way, I don't think it would pass. So what I see now is they're trying to put the, the cart before the horse, is putting in the pipe, and that is going to lead to, it, it will lead to fracking, it will lead to other things that we don't want. I come from a town, we cast a ban, we don't want gas drill. There's a majority of towns up here in Upstate who don't want it, and know and have educated themselves on the dangers. And another thing is you can't mitigate this. Once the pipeline goes in, the companies, for years, they really don't maintain these pipelines. So there's no mitigation on this. I mean, how can you mitigate something that an accident can happen and you can't control? So I say, please do not pass this pipeline. Investigate all those compressor stations, everything that deals with this pipeline before you approve this pipeline. Thank you.
Abby Tamper, Mike Roseman.
Environment and a natural habitat. There's a difference between a 30-inch pipeline and an 8-inch pipeline. We know about climate change, this is a direct impact on the environment, we can prove the directness. No industry sets out to create a disaster. Ask Exxon about the Valdez. Ask BP about the oil rig in the Gulf of Mexico. Ask Daiichi about the nuclear power plant in Japan. Nature can create its own disasters. Hurricane Katrina, Hurricane Isabel, tropical leak affected all of us locally. A mudslide in Washington is also an example of a natural disaster. No matter how well-regulated an industry is, no matter how well one plans for disaster, human errors happen, accidents happen. We don't know what Mother Nature has in store for us in the future. Are we truly protected? Why are we opening our doors?
I don't see the need for a certificate of necessity. I don't see the need for eminent domain. All the pipelines that have been created to date have done so without it. But that being said, we're here tonight to address the application, so therefore I would like to, on behalf of landowners who are directly affected by the pipeline, bring up a couple of points which are not addressed in any of the offers given by Williams Company in a contract for the Constitution Pipeline. Number one, all landowners should be required to be named as additional insured on Williams' environmental and liability policy, and any assigns that should follow Williams in the future. I state this because I am a professional insurance agent, licensed in Pennsylvania and New Jersey, and I can assure you that given the fact of a pipeline on your property, no homeowner's insurance will cover any of the aspects of any pipeline being built. That being said, if you are named as an additional insured, it gives you some form of protection through the other company should an incident happen. Number two, any rollback or future taxes should be a requirement of this application. It is not part of any contract offered to date by Williams. Number three, addressing what should happen should the pipe be abandoned anytime in the foreseeable future, and what kind of reclamation would be required by that abandon. A fourth, which is only personal to my particular property, but it affects many other property owners in about mile number 2.0, 2, 2.0 to 2, 3.0, is bluestone. There is, there is a offer for damages to any trees on the property. There is no offer for any damages to bluestone affected, which has produced many What is that, please? That being said, I am in favor of negotiating personally with Constitution Pipeline, but it should be on a regular basis and not have the eminent domain forcing property owners to sign. Thank you.
James Warden. First, I would like to say I appreciate FERC for voting these hearings and allowing me and everyone else to speak. Thank you. Again, my name is James Warden. I am the intervenor in this project as manager of the Upstate Landowners Group LLC. I represent over 100 landowners and 30 miles of pipelines. I would first like to say that we are not interested in stopping the pipeline, we fully support the development of natural gas in the Northeast.
I'm G.E.R. I'm here for two reasons. First of all, I'm a supervisor for the town of Bainbridge, and I came here to express to the people that way back in May of 2011, Bainbridge was approached by Leatherstocking to, for a franchise agreement, and our town board, just a little bit dangerous. Anyway, Leatherstocking gave us an application for a franchise agreement, granting us permission to provide natural gas to the village and parts of our towns of Bainbridge. Our town had a public hearing back in 2011, and we had discussion and public hearings, and our town board voted unanimously to pass the resolution to grant this franchise to Leatherstocking, and we know that with this Constitution Pipeline, that would help Leatherstocking help our little town and village.
We're going in to constitute this land. Thank you. To the base, I think you will read this, but we'll go on with that. I'm in favor of the pipeline, I'm in favor of the pipelines.
Mary Broblaski, M-A-R-Y Broblaski, W-R-O-B-L-E, W-S-K-I. I'm from Lyman, New York. I am against constitutional pipeline. When constitutional pipelines survey us, they did not ask my permission to come and survey the property, the man right of course. They had double mapping out, they did not ask, not even one person from Upstate New York was doing the job. The job was done by employees from South Jersey, New Jersey. Reading through the papers, I had just in February, there was a well fire in Pennsylvania. They telling us there should be only 500 feet from a house. Unfortunately, they could not get in closer than 900 feet in red heat because of the intense heat. Now, yes, they're saying this will bring jobs. As a surveyor, there are survey properties, survey jobs, only four for each well, jobs are created. Well, I don't think they're creating as many jobs as they're advertising. Unfortunately, what it does is bring more crime, destruction to the road, erosion, contamination. At the end, in March, Albany had approved $28.6 million for a solar project. Nowhere in any newspapers have anybody ever mentioned that Albany had approved any money for a pipeline, for fracking, for drilling. I think either Albany is contradicting themselves, or we are being forced led to believe what this will do. This will not be a permanent job. This is something that is temporary, and when their pipelines are gone, their employees are gone, we are stuck with nothing but contamination. Thank you and have a good night.
Hi, my name is Kim Michaels, K-I-M, M-I-C-H-E-L-S. And actually, I just wanted to provide you with some petitions of people who, some are some people who are opposed to natural gas drilling, that's what some of the petitions are on, some are on both the pipeline and, and gas drilling.
One of the things that I want to address was, actually, a friend of mine, her husband works for Amphenol, and I've heard a few comments on that issue. She told me that when her husband came home from work the other day, he was told that the, all that they, all the, all the employees were being invited to a dinner in Oneonta and also here, and that they could either attend the dinner or not. They were going to be having Brooks BBQ up in Oneonta, I'm not sure what they were serving here, but that they were expected to be here for one of the two nights. And if they value their jobs in the future...
Please do not interrupt the speaker. I will extend my time five seconds for the interruption.
If they valued their jobs in the future, especially with the building of this new plant in Sydney that FEMA apparently helped to build, they would come down here and back up the pipeline. And I'm, I'm, I'm just asking everybody to be honest. Did Amphenol, Amphenol or your union leaders provide you with the signs that you have here today? If that, if that is the case, would you raise your hands and the t-shirts?
You're in newspapers. You're in newspapers.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking you to be honest. I, I am both an anti...
I don't follow rules. I'm a dumbass.
You are asking questions. Don't forget to check in. Please address your comments.
I'm sorry. I was gonna say, can I, I thought everybody was supposed to be on board.
Yes, yes, but I...
Okay. What I, what I have to say is that I'm very much opposed to the pipeline, and I am also against this push for renewables. I've done a lot of research in the last five years since this whole gas issue has come about, and it's been a real wake-up call. This pipeline is just part of a much bigger plan and involves turning New York State and the United States basically into an economic, what are they, they call them economic processing zones, or another term, another term for it is export processing zone. This basically caters to the transnational corporations and allows for quite a bit of changing of laws in order to accommodate that, and allows for the exploitation of the people and the state and our country for the benefit of these companies. Just to give you an example, and actually, I would also like to add, the economy that Cuomo was putting into effect bears a very frightening resemblance, not just to these economic processing zones...
Twenty-second place.
But also, but also to the economics of fascism as practiced in Nazi Germany. And if you don't, if you don't believe that, all, all I would ask is if you go online, look up the economics of fascism, look up, look up export processing zones.
Please include your comments, man.
And just one final thing, you talk, everybody's talking about the economics of this.
This might expire.
I just want to mention one last thing.
Miss Michael.
Take a look at the natural gas infrastructure. Take a look at the natural gas infrastructure. Ask everyone to take a look at the natural gas infrastructure.
We're gonna take a five-minute break. We're gonna come back in five minutes. There's a lot of talk and cheering from everyone, so I'd like to kind of calm down after this, and we're gonna take a five-minute recess, and with that, at nine, 10 p.m. for our reasons. Thank you. If I could have everyone please return to their seats. We'd like to continue the rest of the meeting.
I guess I was asking you yesterday.
Oh, yeah?
This is exactly what they want to do.
Where's the cops now?
Put it down!
It's 9:21. It's 9:21, you're soon.
Hello again. My name is Thomas Collier, CEO of...
Sorry, I was gonna interrupt. If we have any more interruptions of any kind, that'll be the last speaker. This is the last, final and only warning after our break. I would remind, like to ask the speaker, please do not engage...
Sorry, calm down.
People in the audience. The purpose of this meeting is to get comments from you all to us, so please direct your comments to us. Again, if there's any more interruptions, we'll close the meeting. Please go ahead, Mr. Collier.
Hello again. Thank you again.
Janice Agnol, C R A G N O L I N, Delaware County. I presented last night in Oneonta for myself, and my mother asked me to present her tonight. So I'm presenting her statement.
Close it to the mic.
For Bishop Avana, Dr. Avana. Hello, Chairperson, community elected officials, neighbors, and everyone to whom we present our statements. I asked my daughter to read my statement tonight, as I'm 85 years old and I'm unable to attend. Our family has lived here in Nautico and Delaware Counties for over 300 years. We have always worked together in our community. My father and my brother have held volunteer jobs as firemen right here in these counties. They often left their paid, or their, their paid jobs or their suite to answer emergencies. I ask you now, what protections do you have in place? What protections are you requiring for these firemen and their volunteer jobs for pipeline-related accidents? What protection are you requiring for those of us who live here, for our homes and the future of the jobs we now hold? The pipeline will destroy many of our current family jobs, farming, professional fire people, doctors, nurses, teachers, and tourism workers. All of our jobs will be affected by the invasion and the construction of the pipeline and the presence of a pipeline. What protections are in the regulations for us? We are not busing, we live here. Thank you. I would like to add to my mother's statement that I understand there are only eight months worth of jobs for constructing the pipeline, and there will be a lifetime, lifetime repercussion, generations with repercussion to what's happening here in the US that you're not limited. Thank you very much.
Eugene Marner. William Houston.
My name is Eugene Marner, M A R N E R. It's my understanding that it is against the law for an applicant to fragment a project. When Williams came to Delaware County, Franklin, back a couple of years back when this all began, they said that their project was not connected to the central compressor station in, in Dun, Pennsylvania, and was not connected to the right compressor station. It was just a pipeline. Now, it must be a miraculous pipeline that can transport gas 124 miles without any compression behind it. So, we asked FERC, many of us, I think I did in one of my comments, but during the scoping period, we asked FERC to take into account that the, that the project was being fragmented, and that is apparently illegal. There is something else that come, has come to my attention, and that's the other docket number that we, that CP 13-502, the Iroquois Gas Transmission System. I have here a brochure that they publish. It's called SONO, South to North Project. It shows the Constitution Pipeline joining the Iroquois at Wright, at the Wright Station, and the gas going right up to Canada. And it says here, this is so we can export the gas to Canada. We can send this gas to Canada. Now, everybody, from where it can be exported, to any place, liquefied and sent to European markets and Asian markets. Everybody's been talking about the economic benefits of gas here in New York State, imagines that if this goes through, that gas will remain cheap the way it is now because it's being overproduced and because these companies have to keep cranking it out to keep their investors happy. So, there's a surplus of gas, so it's cheap. But gas doesn't sell for $4 a million cubic feet in, over whatever the number is, it sells for eight or nine in Europe and 12 or 15 in Asia. And that's where it's going to go. And this is a world price. When gas goes to eight or nine, if it's, if this gas is being sold for 89, eight or nine dollars in, in Europe, or 10 or 12 in Asia, here in New York, it's going to be the same price because this is a, these are global prices that are affected by global markets. So, thank you.
William Houston. Vera Scroggins. William Houston, H U S T O N. Okay, so, we've been hearing a lot about, I just want to, before I get into this up in some of my comments, I just want to talk about what just happened, and we've been putting up with this for the last three days. They bus in these union people from 80 to 100 miles away. Yesterday, there was one bus from New, Newfield, I'm sorry, Newburgh, New York, and another bus that came from Rome. Rome is 80 miles from Oneonta. Newburgh is 125 miles, stand by for Kipsey. These guys are being bussed in here from a long ways away to bully us and to take the time from legitimate intervenors to make legitimate comments on the DEIS that are substantive in nature. And these guys have one thing to say, jobs, 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 and economic benefits. I'm gonna talk about some of the economic benefits here. First of all, I made a mistake. I quoted somebody from the Monday hearing that there were actually only going to be seven permanent jobs as a result of this pipeline. That was an error. I actually looked it up in the DEIS this morning, and it's five. So all you guys in the orange shirts, this thing is gonna produce five permanent jobs, and you all are getting played. You all are victims, just like we are. And what I want to tell you is that we've been bullied by these big guys in orange shirts for the last three days, and I was just threatened, and I just made a police report, and I don't know what's gonna happen. This guy said, "You better wish I don't follow you out of here." That's what he said. "You better, you better hope I don't follow you out of here." We shouldn't have to put up with this. Let's talk about the economic benefits. Some, that we've heard quoted repeatedly tonight, that there was gonna be $13 million of property tax benefits due to this pipeline. Keep in mind that there's not gonna be any revenue from the gas being transported through the pipeline. That's 100% the profits of the midstream company, which is Williams. Let's talk about the $13 million. 2.1 for Brune County, 1.3 million, Shenango County, 4.9 million, Delaware County, 4.4 million, Schuahara County. Curiously, Susquehanna County isn't listed. I wonder why that is? I don't know. But anyway, comes out to 12.7 million. Let's call it 13 million. So when, what they're paying taxes are on the right of way that they lease, right? So, that has value. Well, what's the value of that? Well, it's whatever, if they lease one-tenth of your property, the value is one-tenth of your property taxes. That's what they lease it for. That's what they, well, that's what they pay, pay for. That's the assessed value. Do you see what I'm getting at? There are, people are already paying taxes. Instead of me, the property owner, paying taxes on that little strip of land, now it's Constitution that's paying taxes. There is zero net income. This $13 million is false. It's a lie. There's gonna be zero property tax benefit from this Constitution Pipeline, and there are innumerable econo, environmental impacts from this, which we've been telling you about for the last three days. And I hope you've been taking good notes and you take it back to the commissioners. This application is defective. The applicant does not deserve a certificate of public convenience because of their atrocious compliance record... Environmental and safety record. You need to withdraw. FERC is not doing your job as lead agency implementing the National Environmental Policy Act. Take this thing back and throw it in the shredder.
I'd like to address, I'm an intervenor on this pipeline, and I'm an intervenor on other pipelines. I'm from Susquehanna County, Vera Scroggins, V E R A S C R O G G I N S. I'd like to also talk about the record of Williams. Williams in our county has had two gas leaks, explosions and fires in two compressor stations the past two years, and they've also had the same type of incidents in New Jersey, New York, and the southern part of our country, and that's in the past two years. Also, the Cabot Oil and Gas that is supporting this line has, up to this point in our county of Susquehanna, 540 DEP violations so far, and millions in fines. These are the type of companies that are supporting this line and producing this line, and look at their record at this point. We have hundreds of miles of pipelines in our county. We have over 800 gas wells, and our property tax, at the most, has been 1% or 2% reduced the past two years after five years of drilling. And if you can compute that on your taxes in New York, you'll see what kind of a savings you're thinking you might be getting of 1% or 2%. That's after five years of working in our county. And I would like to also add that a lot of the workers on the pipelines in our county were out of the area, out of the county, out of the state, coming from a long distance, and they didn't use many at all of the local people. I also heard complaints from the unions in our county for the welders, and they felt that they didn't even want to work for Williams because of the conditions of this company and how they treated them and what they offered them. So unless you have a guarantee from your unions that you're going to be working, I wouldn't count on what kind of jobs you might get and how many will get it. At this point also, we are dealing with environmental impacts of all kinds, because when they do the pipelines, they're cutting through 100 to 150-foot swats, and we're getting a lot of lumber being cut down. We have the most lumber we've ever seen in decades in our county, and the price of lumber has plummeted because of the increase in lumber that we have. So you're opening all these areas, and then the runoff, the sediment runoff is the most that they're seeing in our waterways. This is not something good for the future of our ecosystem. Ecosystems also that they're opening up in the forests, that they're breaking up and cutting through all kinds of breeding and birds, and everything else that we have is throwing off our ecosystems when you're talking about all these pipelines, because this is not gonna be the last pipeline that will probably be coming into New York. We also have compressor stations every two to four miles on our pipelines, and dozens of emissions, we're talking about, about a dozen different toxic emissions by the tons from each compressor station. And we are having all kinds of complaints, health impacts, besides the noise, then there's the health impacts. And I know that these people who, who are working, who are the unions, they care about their families, they also care to make sure that things are good for everyone. Please consider the Pennsylvania people, what we are going through with the water contamination, the air contamination because of this whole industry, and can think about us too, that we have to be fracked even more than ever as we have to put all the gas that's through this pipeline, and it has a high radon content also. We have high radon in Marcellus, and you'll be having high radon in the gas that will be coming through to the whole area. Thank you very much.
Angie Soler.
cutting through all kinds of breeding and birds and everything else that we have is throwing off our ecosystems when you're talking about all these pipelines. Because this is not going to be the last pipeline that will probably be coming into New York. We also have compressor stations every two to four miles on our pipelines and dozens of emissions. We're talking about a dozen different toxic emissions by the tons from each compressor station. And we are having all kinds of complaints, health impacts, besides the noise, then there's the health impacts. And I know that these people who, who are working, who are the unions, they care about their families, they also care to make sure that things are good for everyone. Please consider the Pennsylvania people, what we are going through with the water contamination, the air contamination because of this whole industry. And think about us too, that we have to be fracked even more than ever as we have to put all the gas that's through this pipeline and it has a high radon content also. We have high radon in Marcellus and you'll be having high radon in the gas that will be coming through to the whole area. Thank you very much.
It may go, thank you Craig Stevens and Subway Township, Pennsylvania. I was asked earlier why I'm here the third night in a row, maybe the FERC people want to know too. We're the extraction colony that is going to provide the gas that's being sent to wherever it's going when it's through this 30-inch pipe. So, I'm trying to come here and enlighten you guys and maybe we can shut it down. We'd like to figure out what's, all the problems are with our water and air quality issue where we live before we send the problem up to New York State. I'm also from Oswego, so I have a stake in New York too, as least through the fifth-generation New Yorker. Six explosions and fires at compressor stations in 18 months by the company you're planning on giving this license to, to steal actually. FERC, we the people of the United States of America are demanding a federal investigation into these incidents along with hundreds of others occurring nationwide, including Class 1 rural, which allows for no oversight except by the company that operates the systems. A lack of oversight is a public health and safety hazard. If this were aircraft falling out of the sky, we'd be shutting down airlines and grounding the types of planes involved until we're assured of their safety. But instead, we watch as these incidents occur more frequently. The federal, state, county and local governments, regardless of classification of their area, must retain jurisdiction on this type of infrastructure to actively safeguard and prevent dangerous accidents like those from happening when companies themselves are left in charge of them. The constitutions of Pennsylvania and the United States of America do not allow the citizens to be put in danger from avoidable, potentially fatal incidents that are occurring on a frighteningly regular basis. And to allow such would be a dereliction of duty for any official or emergency responder anywhere. My father spent 63 years in the Civil Air Patrol in specialized emergency management, would never have tolerated this frequency of issues from the same type of equipment, let alone the same company, without againing full accounting and responsibility being taken for it. The company Williams is operating hundreds of these stations and thousands of miles of pipelines across America and regulatory authorities should be treating each incident as unacceptable. And six in 18 months is a pattern of issues that should be considered systemic in nature. You're all put on notice if the citizens who have empowered you and the taxpayers who foot the bill demand immediate answers and actions. Any lack of action or regard is a dereliction of duty to result in immediate resignation or removal from office by your bosses. We, the people. I'm just reading the news, I'm just Google Williams and you'll find the very interesting things with all the problems it had. The workers were welding a portion of a non-active pipe at the compressor station at the time of the explosion. About 7:00 PM, emergency responders, including firefighters and ambulances rushed to the scene. Mayor Jim Leonard said he will ask the Federal Pipeline Hazards Material Safety Administration, which regulates the pipeline safety, to investigate. The fire started at the facility early on Monday and was followed by an explosion, I'm sorry, explosion in one storage tank, said Ed Dunbar, a captain with Benton County Fire District Office. Residents, guys, if you're in the orange shirts, these are all the people they've put into jeopardy. I mean, come on, they don't care about you. When you get blown up and burned, there is no care by Williams, so hopefully your union will take care of you. The explosion destroyed two homes and damaged another, Thomas said, leaving a crater in the ground 60 feet around. At least one person was transported to a local hospital with burns, another was brought into the hospital for evaluation. I'm going to end it again like they did last night. Scariest thing I ever heard is, we're from the federal government, we're here to help, so I'm going to call FERC. Fires, explosions, rights trampling, Constitution abusers. Thank you.
Annie Soder, Lottie Marsh. My name is Annie Soder, I see you're T E O. It's hard to know where to start with all, there's just so many things on. And they don't want us to ask questions or have any audience participation. But, I would just like to say that to Mr. Payne, who was from OSHA, who spoke before saying how safe it was, how can, how can he say that in the face of six explosions in 18 months? Not to mention WIP, that just exploded in Carlsbad. And it took weeks and weeks for the information to come out that the people had been fatally poisoned with radiation. And also about the, I'm an affected landowner, our land, I'm not sure if it still goes right through our land, it might have moved it like 50 feet from our land up the hill where it's plugged down all the time. So, I'm not sure if it's directly on my land, but it will affect my husband's and our business where we have a forge and ceramics pottery there. And we have a lot of fire there all the time. And if there's gas, if there were to be a gas leak, it would be really a bad place to have a gas leak. We'd be stuck between the river and the explosion like the people and those other people that got burned to death. The other thing is, talking about how there's going to be economic benefits, I've lived downwind from a compressor before. I didn't live here my whole life. I've lived all over the place. My husband is a veteran, US Air Force medic veteran, and he has damaged kidneys from exposure to TCE from a super fun site that used to be called an airbase, the last one he was in. So, he, um, oh. And as far as automatic cutoffs, the guy, Mr. Marsh was speaking about how they were going to put in automatic cutoffs. Even if they put in automatic cutoffs, I know WIP had automatic cutoffs too, which they originally said, "Cutoff before any pollution made to the surface." And then it turned out, well, maybe there was a minute, well, maybe there was five minutes, well, maybe it's still leaking out plutonium and uranium all over the southwest. And as far as the gas having radon in it, do you really want gas with radon in it pumped in to heat your schools? I mean, we know we have radon around here. You go down in your basement and you take a Geiger counter and it just starts clicking away. And when they take that gas up, if it has radon in it and then they burn, the closer it is, I mean, it comes into your school, then they're going to burn it in there? What's going to happen with that? Do you really want pipes, hot pipes, literally hot pipes in your kids' schools? And talking about economic benefits, that was the kind of thing I was going to say before. The economic benefit, yeah, maybe it'll make however many new jobs in your town. I wonder if anybody knows how much it costs to treat one case of childhood cancer from living downwind from a compressor? When we lived downwind from a compressor, every time they released it, or vented it or whatever they'd call it, people would sit around there in the desolation of what was left of Pontyron, Kansas, after the oil and gas left. And they'd say, "Oh, it smells like money." And then you'd drive into town to, with a stink of methane every 20 feet. And then you'd go into the 7-Eleven or whatever the Sonic, and on every counter, there would be a canister with a bald kid begging for quarters to pay for their cancer. Please, don't do it.
Lottie Marsh, Ray Lewis. My name is Lottie Marsh, M A R S H. I'm an affected homeowner and intervener. Cabot Williams is purposefully pitting union members against homeowners by having them bust in, give them a shirt, give them a hat and give them dinner. Although, although these union members hold signs saying they live here, they are from as far away as Rome, New York, 80 miles, and Newburgh, New York, 125 miles away. They have been coached to disrupt the true landowners' comments. It's amazing to me how little it takes to have people forego their integrity. Maybe when they're in a mob, it's easier. Jobs is a hot-button word and it's been used not only by the union, but by companies as well to manipulate people. Amphenol, for instance. Amphenol has been caught, has been in the press with Cabot Williams as the so-called job savior. If Amphenol was so concerned about being competitive, why didn't they get gas years ago? Surrounding towns Walton, Oneana and Norwich have had natural gas for 40 years. A pipeline connection to any of these towns would be cost-effective and alleviate the need of Amphenol to keep outsourcing jobs to Mexico and China, which they've done even after receiving $750,000 incentive from the IDA to stay in the area and close to $50 million in state and flood recovery funding. For over 60 years, Merabato has had the monopoly stranglehold on oil pump, on oil and propane in Sydney. Now that Merabato has become a partner to Corning Leather Stocking and Stan to reap great financial gains, suddenly it's yay, natural gas, and Amphenol is using that for its worth. Amphenol may employ less than 800 people in the tri-county area, but have their dark side. Heaven contributes in Sydney and cancer cluster areas. Amphenol does not need the pipeline to get gas. There are other vendors. This pipeline is a panacea. It can easily be our ruination. The burning of natural gas is not truly cleaner and the extraction process makes it much more environmentally disastrous than either coal or oil. An accident or spill knows no boundaries or property lines. And the people who don't want the infrastructure and build-out, which will industrialize our rural communities, will suffer devastation and loss. The profit is not ours. The damage left behind is ours. Thank you.
Ray Lewis, L E W R S. I'd like to talk about the impact of this pipeline on land values. The highly esteemed Certified Property Appraisal Group, called the Forensic Appraisal Group, based in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, completed 18 studies on the impact of natural gas transmission lines on private property values. From these 18 studies, they concluded that a pipeline across private property will reduce your whole property value by an average of 30%. Therefore, if your property value is 500,000, putting a pipeline through there drops that value to 350,000 immediately. That's a $150,000 decrease. My question is this: is the just compensation coming from Cabot for that loss of 150,000? There is no just compensation coming from Cabot for that loss. This, my friends, is the epitome of robbery. So now, not only are we victims of theft by having our land stolen through eminent domain, but now we are also victims of robbery because we are not being compensated for the loss of the value of our land. We have become victims of theft and robbery by our own government. Shame, shame, shame. Thank you.
Stephen Stoddard. Eleanor Moriarty. Good evening and thanks for being here. I'm glad to be here. My name is Stephen Stoddard, S T O D D A R D. I'm a teacher. I live 10 miles down the road where I do property. I'm glad to have a pipeline come through it because I work right through the ground and I know how safe it is. 40-hour hazardous operations, certified 8-hour hazardous workflow, refresher course, ocean tank construction, 8-hour forklet safety, H M I T, train to trainer. That means I train people. And hazardous waste, and hazardous, that's my job, part of it. Also 8-hour transportation security. This is just some of the training that I have to go through in order to do my job, which right now, I have to travel sometimes up to 1,500 miles to go to work. And when I do that, I'm incurring another $3,000 a month in living expenses because I have to leave a state where I'm paying taxes. Property taxes, school taxes and income taxes. Because we can't have our own work here. I don't like eminent domain, but where we'd be, we wouldn't be anywhere without it. We would have a railroad, we'd have nothing. On one hand, eminent domain steals property. On another hand, bans against things telling people what they can and cannot do with their property are wrong. It's no different than eminent domain. You erect a ban telling me what I can't do, you might as well be stealing my property from me. Last thing I'd like to say, I've worked out on the pipeline, I've worked on environmental crews, I've also worked with FERC inspectors onsite and I know how hard they work to keep us in line with what we're supposed to do. I know how difficult sometimes it is to do the work that we have to do to keep the environment as safe as possible. It's not perfect, nothing is. Gentlemen and women recording this meeting, do not have my permission to use anything I have said or my images on the internet. And that's final. Thank you very much, I appreciate you being here.
You're going to be on YouTube tonight.
Eleanor Moriarty. Barbara Lovewood.
Eleanor, E L E A N O R, Moriarty, M O R I A R T Y. I'm against this whole D E I S. I've made that known before. I don't believe there is any such thing as mitigation as possible when it comes to our wetlands and upland forests. I want to be very specific about one area that the construction, the Constitution pipeline is planning to go through. And it's called the Cannisville Millstream Area. And it was a constitution state that route changes were made to avoid recreational areas as much as possible. And this area is not only a recreational area for hikers and birders, but it has been designated as an important birding area. And New York State, the criteria for important birding areas is one, sites for specific species at risk, two, sites identified with the most important habitats for simulates of bird species whose long-term conservation is the responsibility of New York State. The Constitution pipeline across in three areas impacting 46 acres, 28.1 of those acres is upland forest and operation of that pipeline would impact 22 acres, 13.1 above land forest. The fragmentation of forest is well documented. A forest habitat will impact negatively upon neotropical migrants, the wood interior species, increasing the risk of predation. The population benefiting from fragmenting forest are small and in particular, which you always hear about, the golden winged warblers. They have received numerous grants and funding from the federal government to work hand-in-hand with farmers to reconstruct the habitat that they breed in, if indeed they can breed. The area of Cannisville Millstream is further the breeding and nesting area for the bald eagle, the bird that was brought back from near, through dedication from near extinction many years ago. The Delaware Autsega Audubon Society, which covers that area of Cannisville Millstream, has since 2009 been collecting data on the spring migration of the golden eagle and have found that this corridor is a major migratory route for the goldens. And they have recently, through a research project, have begun to collect data that it's possible those goldens are overwintering in that area. The D E S has noted that the bald eagles is there, but there has been no mention of the golden or other risk species. D E S further mentioned at four different points, perhaps more, the need for Constitution to develop an upland forest mitigation plan, which to date has not been developed. I do know the Constitution had met with Audubon, New York, and they did do work out some sort of deal. Delaware Autsega Audubon was, did not approve that. We said in writing to them and strongly opposed that that area in any form or shape gets disturbed. Audubon, New York at that point did not have any data or information about the golden eagles. I think that's something worth looking at too. Thank you.
Barbara Leftler, B A R B A R A L O E double F L E R. I have several things I'd like to comment on. Number one, our rescue units, it's not been addressed in that, in that document that you have. We're also part of- We're also part of that. I have to take extra medicine just to come here. I'm sure those guys would be very happy if I had to get carted out of here in an ambulance. But the other thing I have to say is, also, I got a communication from them, from Constitution Pipeline, their little newsletter they send out, and they did address the man camp issue, but they didn't address the problem with it. They said it was going to make more jobs in hotels and food industry, which is true, but we don't need more minimum wage jobs. We need real jobs. Today, in Oneonta, we got to have a rare example of what it will be like to have a man camp. Friends of mine were having dinner and had to leave because a group of these men came in and they were loud and obnoxious, and they couldn't even have a conversation with each other. So they had to leave. I don't think that's right, and we got a big eye-opening experience with that today. I'm not mentioning what restaurant it was. And that's all I have to say.
Ethel Farnia, Bevel Lock. Lyndon Bevelock.
Ethel Farnia, Bevelock, D.I.L. I'm a man I O. Bevelock, C.E.P.I.R.C.U.U.A. I'm an intervener. It's a shame to see what's happened to my near communities and neighbors. Some people don't even know what's coming. They don't even know it's fracking. Even I have cousins in Pennsylvania who didn't even know what fracking was until I told them a year ago. You know, people are not even aware of what's going on, and there's a lot of radon. And like Sandra Steinbrenner always said, anytime you move anything, you disrupt anything, eventually it goes up into the air. When it rains from the cloud, it comes back down again. And uranium will come back down. So you're going to get oil and food. So I don't know where we're going to get our food from. I'm worried about my grandson that's only two months now. What kind of environment is he going to be able to live in? So we've got to look at the next generation, the next six generations now. Where are we going to give to the next generations? That's what I'm worried about. I've seen people in deposits and forums with Constitution. I won't be here, but what about your family that you don't leave behind? Where you don't leave that? Is that a future with good radiation, no food? That's what's something else on the Internet, that bees are dying now, and you need them to pollinate your food. If you can't pollinate food, food isn't going to grow. So where are we going to get our food from? We're going to start eating each other at the car? You can see how it gets here just through Constitution Pipeline. Imagine if they can't eat? It's going to get crazy. These are true facts. I don't understand. I talked in the airport. What planet do you all live in that we don't? That was my first teach in the airport. You know, I've been doing one job, one jobs, too. I worked, I drove 180 miles each way each weekend. I left the family up here by themselves. It wasn't easy for the wife to take care. Take care of animals, too, beef cows and sheep and birds and chickens. It's not easy. Now I want to retire. I want to enjoy the place. I want, here's a pipeline company here, we want to frack. I want to be left alone. I want my own freedom. I don't want to be here, waste my time. I'd rather be home, relaxing, watching TV. I put in my time. I don't want to be here. But to defend my family to come and generations, and my kids live in Sydney? Come on. I have two of them that live in Sydney. My grandson lives in Sydney. So I hope she moves out of this. Even Binghamton is no better. We have all, the 98 wells up above, and he's done a great job on YouTube, showing it all. Great, Tree Divide showed it to them. It's running down, right down the Halyan River, right into the Gulf of Mexico. So, okay, they're just dumping oil right into the Gulf of Mexico. Let's get all the wells to run in there, too. Let's pull it to government, we'll feed fish and everything else. We'll weather all this. Where's cancer coming? Let's do a research where the cancer's coming from. Wherever you point, everybody says, oh, here we have cancer. We're going to deal with it. Let's see where it's coming from. And Carol French in Pennsylvania, she's got a ratio, the cow's got a ratio. It doesn't take a rocket scientist. It's there, the evidence. If she's got it, the cow's got it. Where did it come from? Where else? They're drinking the same water they're bathing in. And they say, whatever you bathe in, it doesn't matter you're drinking water. My aunt, she's 80 years old. She was all, I'm drinking water. Are you going to clean your clothes? Are you going to bathe yourself in drinking water? And from a bottle?
20 seconds.
Thank you, and I hope that you dismiss this because we need renewables.
Lyndon Bevelock. I hadn't written anything before I came tonight, but I was sitting here very courteously, listening to everyone speaking. And I'm listening to all the heckling and the booing that's going on, that I couldn't even hear people talking. And I was getting so riled up that I started writing, so here goes. If these people, all these union people, are being busted in from other areas, how many local jobs are there? A handful? The Constitution promised you. Did they promise you union wages? Have you checked into it? We've seen a video with a construction site person was videotaped, and they're not paying union wages. How many of these people researched what that pipeline needs to push it along? Compressor stations full of toxic emissions. I'm really not into science. I'm just speaking from my heart. Of course, we would all like to heat our homes more cheaply. Last year, we went to a presentation from Leatherstocking that was, I think, in Merridale, and my German was there who spoke last night. And he said that, and he was laughing about it, but it was the truth. He said that people think that, you know, they're going to be able to tap into this gas and get it for their home. If you don't have cellphone service, you're not getting gas. I mean, of course, us of fortune, I heat oil, we chop trees. We have two woodstoves going over. It's a pain in the neck. It's a full-time job. It's physically very demanding. But what other choice do we have? The story about Amphenol, I mean, that's bribery. I mean, this is, this gas is not for us. They're saying it. You know, these Leatherstocking people just coming in in the end, oh, we'll be able to tap into this and that. That hasn't been it from the beginning. It's been that it's going to go straight to the other markets. As I said yesterday, I know the union members were here, but they all conveniently left. They all managed to get it first.
It cost them.
Well, okay, I understand that. But as I said yesterday, my husband is a union member. Our bread and butter comes from his union. He was a member for 26 years. He got all his OSHA. He had to go to school for everything. He worked in high-rise places in Manhattan. I know what it's like to be without a husband and a father. I raised my kids by myself. I didn't company to do that. Four kids I raised by myself, and I ran a farm with these friggin' woodstoves. It wasn't a lot of work. Would I do it again? No. People say it's just a pipeline, a fraud. Pipelines equal compressor stations. And believe me, that will open everything up to fracking. And that's a whole other story. To all the union members heckling about the safety of the pipelines, have you researched anything? Like, they said six explosives in 18 months. Have you done any research? Where are you living? Do you read the news? Do you stay on top of things? Have you researched deceitfulness and the secrecy of Williams? How would any of you union members like it? Landowners like it? You've worked your whole life to get something, to get a home, to put all your hard earned money...
20 seconds, please.
And the pipeline comes along and says that, that said, they've destroyed everything. What recourse do you have? I'm hoping that tomorrow's meeting will be a little bit more civil, and that these people will stop with these barbarian ways. It's really very wrong. This is a government meeting. It's not right. Thank you.
Robert Curlley, K.E.R.L.E.Y., President of New York County, New York. I wanted to add to the comments I made last night. I've been talking quite a bit about what really seems to be happening here with this pipeline. It's probably going to be probably one part or one segment, I believe, you know, some type of a pipeline grid that would go from kind of the Grand Eastern, Northeastern pipeline grid, extent from West Virginia up into maritime provinces. I think probably this is a segment that's absolutely going to be part of some type of future, probably corporate, I called it in my notes here, globalized level corporate profitization cycle, where we keep moving gas into LNG, then offshore again. I think probably a lot of the gas would ultimately, you know, after 2025 or so, end up in Western Europe, many places that are largely reliant on Gazprom or Russia right now, entities like that. A lot of them go to East Asia, China, to Japan. You know, a few speakers talked about that tonight, but I think that's the real issue here. This is really getting into almost G8-level major Western politics here. Probably this issue is really something way above the Energy Department, FERC, or even one branch of government, probably. These are big, big issues, and I'm glad that few people spoke about it. Anyway, I left off last night saying that pipeline is unnecessary and inconvenient, and I guess I really feel that way. This is probably just going to be another part of some type of a real corporate station system at a global level that really goes against the American people, ultimately, labor unions, workers, and people like that. Going to continue ultimately, in terms of long-term gradation, probably, to suffer down and down. So I hope people kind of understand what I'm talking about. I think for this evening, there was definitely a tone of bullying in the room. There was a tone of lost order. I realize that meetings like this or here can either go, the majority, per se, at any one time, can either be pro or anti-pipeline, depending on the meeting, but this was a real low-energy level tonight, and it was a real shame to see it. And to make a comment just about, somebody said that this pipeline project was potentially a burden of killing people through stress. I tend to believe it. I tend to believe that probably the people who were the pipeline built to go on, going 100 feet from the house, right here, the residence, stress level is probably so high that probably, yeah, ultimately, this pipeline is probably meant to hurt people stressed from it. All in my compass there. Thank you.
Everyone who signed up to speak tonight, who had that final part of tonight's meeting, will close. I thank everyone who's come here and stayed here, who were like the game tonight. So if you would like additional information about any of these projects, I encourage you to use our website at ferc.gov and use the library link to input the document numbers for these projects, CP13-499 and CP13-502. If you'd like copy and transcript this meeting, you can make these arrangements with the court of order. So on behalf of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, thank you for coming here tonight. I let the record show the meeting closed at 10:15.
We've got an early night tonight.
It's about tomorrow. It's about tomorrow's meeting.